whatsoever the Security Council where the veto exists with Russia and China. And we did this before with Sierra Leone and with Cambodia in the late 1990s, and it worked. So it's a legally credible formula. It takes time. The arc of international criminal justice is very long, but that is a plausible way to actually achieve an indicted leadership in Moscow. And that could ultimately lead, of course, then to trial someday.
David Schiffer was U.S. Ambassador at Large for War Crimes Issues during the Clinton Administration, now a Senior Fellow at the Council on Foreign Relations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So two years into this state of kind of debt limbo, you've basically got two camps emerging. The first says, instead of this series of last-minute reprieves, just cancel it, just get this over with. And the second camp says the opposite. Why are we not ending this moratorium right now?
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
Join us for The Daily starting at 6:30 weekdays on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Sweetbrier College, offering a core curriculum focused on women's leadership designed to prepare graduates to lead no matter where their dreams might take them. SBC.edu. And Member One Federal Credit Union, offering a blend of financial products for members in Roanoke, Lynchburg, Franklin County, and the New River Valley.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from BetterHelp, connecting people with a therapist in a private online environment for issues like depression and relationships. Twenty thousand therapists are available through BetterHelp using a computer or smartphone. Betterhelp.com-public. And Aspiration, working to help people combat climate change with a credit card that lets them plant a tree with every purchase. One card, zero carbon footprint. aspiration.com/credit. Aspiration Financial LLC.
It's Here and Now. What a battle! Paris Jep Cheer Cheer wins the Boston Marathon, a Kenyan victory! A nail-biter finish today in the women's race at the 126th Boston Marathon. As you heard, Kenyan runner Paris Jep Cheer Cheer pulled ahead. On the men's side, Evans Chibet, also of Kenya, triumphed. This is the first Boston Marathon held on its traditional spring day since the start of the pandemic. And reporter Alex Ashlock joins us from the finish line. Hi, Alex.
Hello.
This is also the 50th anniversary of the Boston Marathon's first official women's field. You watched the women's race from a truck rolling ahead of the leaders. It sounded exciting. What happened?
It was really amazing. And the women that ran this race today, the 126th Boston Marathon, they staged a race that the women who ran back in 1972 would be proud of. Jep Cheer Cheer won this seesaw battle down Boylston Street, as you just heard in that clip. It was really a race unlike I've ever seen here before. The top three spots were basically decided before the halfway point of the race, 13 miles. And Jep Cheer Cheer led a breakaway, and it turned into a three-woman race. Eventually, she won it by just four seconds over Ababel Yezena of Ethiopia. Jep Cheer Cheer, I should say, has now won an Olympic marathon.
Our closed meeting, we're really convening from our closed meeting. And I won't ask for, I'm asking for a motion to certify our closed meeting.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meetings was convened was, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of City Council in attendance.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, will please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb.
Here. Aye. Positive, yes.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. And there being no further business set forth from this recess meeting, it will be, council is hereby adjourned.
We've got three minutes.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. The former is present. This afternoon, I'm delighted to have the invocation be delivered by the Reverend Cedric Malone, pastor of the Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church here in this city. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. We pause for peace in the Ukraine, for fires in the West, gun violence in Portland, Oregon, Columbia, South Carolina, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and the New York subways. Gracious God, we invite and we invoke thy presence in our deliberations today. We ask that you would look beyond our many faults and meet our needs, that we might be expeditious in the business that is set before us. In your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you all for coming this afternoon. Let me just say that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. At this time, we have a resolution appointing an interim City Council person. Are we ready for that, Madam Clerk?
I believe we are.
We are? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, interim City Council member to fill a nine-month term of office, a former council member Robert L. Jeffrey Jr., ending December 31st, 2022. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
I will ask the clerk to read the title paragraph.
A resolution appointing Anita James Price as member of the City Council for the City of Roanoke in accordance with Section 4 of the City Charter and Virginia Code, Section 24.2-228, for a term commencing upon qualification and expiring on December 31st, 2022.
All right. Any discussion among members of council?
Yes, sir. I do. Thank you. I just wanted to read a written statement. Since Robert Jeffrey had to forfeit his seat as a member of City Council last month, I have been given this opportunity to appoint a candidate to fill his vacancy a lot of thought. I must say, this is probably the most difficult decision I have yet to have to make. Please know, it is not something that I take lightly. I have reviewed my notes on the interview of all five candidates, who I do believe could have served the citizens well, served the citizens well, given the opportunity. However, we can only vote for one person to serve the nine months. In fairness to the voting public, I wanted the council to give thought to supporting a former council member. There were four that had applied for consideration, who would not, who would not have sought the two-year term in November's election. I believe no one who intends to enter the November election should be allowed to use the nine-month appointment to gain political advantage over other candidates who are considering the same two-year term of office in the upcoming November election. And that being said, is because there was another candidate who wanted to seek to be considered for that seat, and she was not given that opportunity. So in fairness to her, I felt that we could not, at least I could not, look at another who was seeking the same seat as well. So therefore, I plan to vote for former council member Price, because she has publicly stated she does not wish to run for this seat, but wishes to fulfill her civic duty by offering her 12 years of experience and expertise since having served on City Council from 2008 to 2020. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or discussions by members of the council? Her and now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch. Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Is that a yes or no, or just present?
That's present.
Present is an acceptable response.
Okay. Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Okay. And Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. And now, I'm going to ask Ms. Price, but I want to recognize and ask the Honorable Honorable Judge of our Circuit Court if he would come down and prepare to minister the oath to a newly appointed clerk, I mean, newly appointed council member, Ms. Trish White Boyd, I mean, gee.
Keep working with her.
Ms. Anita James Price.
Well, let me start off by saying this Honesty, I swear I need him, but I think I gave a lot of people a pause when they saw me walking here in a black robe. They thought I was either minister. I said, no, you're okay. Mr. Mayor and council members, it is a privilege and an honor to be asked to do so. I know you all have a busy day, so I won't take up your time. I've known Anita for years and years and years, her daughter and my daughters all grew up together, so I think you all made a fine choice. Would you raise your writing, please? You have a Bible?
I didn't bring one.
I didn't bring my Bible.
That's okay. All right, I'll just raise my hand.
Okay. Well, come on closer. If you repeat after me, Anita, I, Anita James Price.
Aye, Anita James Price.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Say that one more time.
This is bountiful.
Yes, it is.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent.
All the duties incumbent.
Upon me.
Upon me.
As the interim council member.
As the interim council member.
Of the council of the City of Roanoke.
Of the council of the City of Roanoke.
Virginia.
Virginia.
To fill the nine-month term.
And to fill the nine-month term.
Of office.
Of office.
Of Robert Lee Jeffrey Jr.
Of Robert Lee Jeffrey Jr.
Ending December 31st, 2022.
Till December 30th, 2022.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Anita, if you would, please sign both here. Nervous, you're bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Please join me in recognizing Anita James Price. I also want to thank Judge Ware for coming and doing the swearing-in. And Anita, we do not have a chair for you this afternoon, but we'll have one set up for you later tonight. So if you want to say a few words?
I just want to say a quick thank you. I just want to take this opportunity, first of all, to thank the many, many citizens of the City of Roanoke and friends who encouraged me to take this leap of faith, to come back to serve our city. And I will say that it's very unfortunate, the circumstances for which this appointment had to be made, but I want to thank my colleagues, my former colleagues, for your vote of confidence that I will do my very best to uphold and serve our beautiful city for this interim period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I join Ms. Moon Reynolds on the statement that this is a tough decision, but that we had to go through, a lot of thought, and I appreciate my colleagues on council for doing what they needed to do as the governing body of our city. All right. We are going to, our next section will be the announcements, Madam Clerk. Will be announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking application for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, there's one vacancy, and that's an architect that we're looking for. Roanoke Arts Commission, one vacancy. Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, one vacancy. Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. The Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, one vacancy. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, one vacancy. You can access the city's homepage to complete an online application for any of the vacancies that I just mentioned. Also, you can call the clerk's office. They will be pleased to walk you through the process, because as council members, we want our citizens to be a part of the government that we have here in this seven-time All-American City. So please submit your name if you want to be a part of it, and the process is easy in terms of the application. And the process is easy in terms of the application. All right. At council's recess meeting this morning, city council conducted four interviews to select two candidates to serve as Roanoke City School Board trustees for three-year terms of office, each commencing July the 1st, 2022. Uh, and the candidates are Mary F. Apple, Appel, Ryan A. Baal, Kathy C., Kathy S. Cohen, and Joyce W. Watkins. At the seven o'clock session tonight, a public hearing will be held to hear the views of citizens regarding the selection of the four candidates for Roanoke City School Board trustees. And an announcement of the two successful candidates will be made at the May 2nd regular session of council. Item number two is presentations and acknowledgements. We have none. Uh, item number three is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And I will ask a clerk, do we have any citizens that have signed up? I have one card.
That's the citizen, yes.
Linda, Craigie, Linda? All right. Uh, at 424th Street Southeast. Come on up and you want to talk to us about, uh, the homeless? Is that, is this the individual that, that we were? This is not the other person who wants to talk to me about the homeless?
No.
Okay. All right, come on up, ma'am, ma'am. I know someone that wanted 10 minutes. I, I said, okay, and I pulled you in, oh, they want to talk about the homeless. I thought it was done, but it wasn't there. Right there, ma'am.
Right up here. No, 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 up to the mic.
Right there, the podium, right there.
Okay. This is my first time being in the council chamber, but I've lived in Roanoke for 73 years. And, uh, I tried so hard when I was younger to get out of here and not come back, because my life in Roanoke City back then wasn't very good and I had a whole lot of things going wrong back in 1980s and 90s. So I still struggling with some adversities that I still face. But back in the days when I was not doing well, I had people who knew me and friends and acquaintances back then, which, uh, helped me to get from one place to another during the time that I was, uh, a mental patient in, uh, mental health services in Roanoke Valley. I had, had a counselor, I had this go, a social worker, I had doctors and stuff. When you are, uh, an outpatient from a mental hospital, the doctors told me, keep your appointments. When, when you are a patient in a mental institution, I was in Western State Hospital in Stanton in 1973, '74 and '75. Then, you know, uh, I got discharged in 1975 from Stanton, Western State. But when I came back to Roanoke, one of the case managers in Stanton Hospital found me a place to go in an apartment. So that's why I came back to Roanoke. I had a, a new, a new home and it was, uh, the address was 375 Highland Avenue Southwest. That was my, uh, first apartment, living independently. I was about 26 years old and, uh, that place is still there. It was a house with, uh, apartments inside, made into apartments. There were five units and it was a brick house, two-story house. I don't know if you have driven by, down Franklin Road, saw Best Israel synagogue on one, on one side, uh, down that way, lost funeral home, St. Mark's Lutheran Church and Christ of the Episcopal Church down at Franklin Road area. Well, my house, my apartment house was, uh, it was on Highland Avenue, which ran into Franklin Road. So I used to live there, but, uh, I, I lived there for six years and then moved back in with my mother. My mother was a elementary school teacher at Green Valley Elementary School off of Colonial Avenue and Obadell Drive. That was my mother's, uh, place where she worked and she was a teacher. She taught third grade, uh, at that time, eight-year-old kids. She was third grade teacher at Green Valley Elementary School. She also had some friends who were also colleagues and worked at, uh, same school. Some of the other teachers knew my mom and they, they liked her and, you know, she got along well. Well, you know, and then, uh, when I moved back in with her, uh, in October 1981, I had just quit my job at Stuart McGuire, a mail order catalog company in Salem, Virginia, on Bran, off Bran, Bran Road. And then, uh, I had worked there for three years. I had a history of, of leaving jobs without telling anyone that I was leaving. And then, uh, people who, where I was working said, what, where's Linda? We, what, did you see her leave? Well, I used to work for the, to, for the Roanoke Times and Times World. I used to work in the newsroom of the Roanoke Times. And this was, had a job there as a typist to, uh, type of the articles for the newspaper at Roanoke Times. But, uh, you know, I was having, I was having emotional problems. And I worked there from August 1973 to January 1974, which, uh, during those, those months I was working at.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish.
Well, I, and then after I left that job, uh, I cut, I went back to Stanton and, and I just said, I, yeah, I don't know why, but I went back to hospital. Well, when I got there, I had a different, there was a different social worker than the one I was, I was seeing when I was there before 1973, before I got that job at Roanoke Times. And this new social worker had never seen me, but she, she, her name was Lois Wanger and she was a kind of like a Mennonite, kind of, uh, German descent. And Lois Wanger told me, she said, Linda, I don't think you should come in and out of here, uh, and become a chronic patient who's always coming in and out. And I said, well, I, I just seem like I just really have to have somewhere to get help sometimes, and that's why I came in there. And Ms. Wanger said, well, you're, you're just gonna only have to stay a week and then you can go back home. I, I don't think you need to be here that, that much. I stayed, so I stayed there a week and went back, came back to Roanoke and then in, um, that was, say, February of 1974. Well, um, then later on that year, later on in 1974, I, I think I was 25 years old and, uh, I, I wasn't one of these, um, hippies or, you know, people back then sometimes dressed a certain way. Well, I, I tried to dress like, uh, the people in church, because I'd been to church in Lynchburg in 1972. I enrolled in Thomas Road, uh, Thomas Road Bible Institute in Lynchburg, where Jerry Falwell was pastor of Thomas Road Baptist Church in the 70s in Lynchburg. Also, I was, I was interested in studying the Bible. I have a Bible right here. But I was, I thought I was a real Christian. But it turned out that I hadn't, had never been saved.
Let me ask you, let me ask you, Linda. How can we be of assistance to you? What do you, you need?
Well, the reason, the reason I wanted to speak to council today is that what I, I'm a, I'm a guest at the rescue mission now, and I'm concerned about problems that we're having at the mission. The, uh, the women's shelter, which is, uh, run by a, a manager named Suzanne Cook, is our manager of our women's shelter. Suzanne and I have known one another for a while. And Suzanne is a, um, um, well, I don't really know what background she has or education. I don't know that, but when I came back to the mission recently, last December, to, I, I was placed in cold shelter. Well, cold shelter was, were, were, guests did come in and stay a while to be in at night, when it was cold at night. Cold shelter was what they were offering in December. And then I, and then after that, uh, I was allowed to come back into a modified program on December 21st, when Suzanne agreed to lift my suspension and let me come back in the mission. And after December 21st, uh, I stayed at the mission and I, I've been there ever since, but it hasn't been, uh, completely a positive experience, cause at the mission right now, uh, you know.
Well, this is what I'm going to do. I'm gonna refer your situation to a city manager and he will have staff to follow up on your situation at, at the, at the rescue mission, okay?
Okay.
We'll have him follow up.
I, I, I would just want to request one more thing before I finish speaking. I, I was hoping to ask city council to consider, uh, appropriating some funds to, to spend, fund the money to the rescue mission in order to keep, uh, keep it from shutting down. Because, uh, one of the, we had a house meeting last Friday and one of the, the director of operations at the mission, uh, his first name was Carl, I don't remember his last name. He appealed to us to, uh, be, to a volunteer, because he said, we need, the mission needs volunteers in order to, to stay open. And then, uh, we had chapel service last Friday evening, where the chapel of the mission named Bobby Twine spoke to us. And, uh, he's, Bobby Twine is a very, um, gifted speaker. He's, he's, he's an advocate American and we're, I'm one of his friends. Bobby Twine brought a message last Friday night, uh, on, uh, on the Easter, message from the New Testament Book of Luke and the account of the arrest of Jesus on, uh, when he was crucified. And then so Bobby Twine brought that message last Friday evening. Yesterday was Easter Sunday and I went to church yesterday. The church I go to is First Baptist and First Roanoke downtown. That's the church I went to yesterday. And Pastor Brian Smith brought the Easter message.
Okay. Well, we're gonna ask some, let's, council members ask some questions. Uh, we're gonna refer it to, to Ms. Cow's office and he'll have somebody to help you and work you through those issues, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you for, for letting me speak. I appreciate everything city council does to help citizens around it. I did vote for you, Mayor Lee, in the last election.
Well, we're gonna take care of you then, ma'am. We're gonna take care of you. You just said the magic word.
Also, I, I hope, I hope that, uh, the Martin Luther King statue was there on the Martin Luther King Bridge.
Okay.
I hope that, uh, will inspire your, your people who have, uh, have strong feelings about the race situation, you know? I, I think everyone does. So I wanted to let you know, I'm, I'm not a racist. I used to be accused of being a racist.
We're gonna follow up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
You want me to leave now or what?
Well, he'll get some information from me.
Yeah, Mayor, I would ask if someone could meet with her now. Then they'll better leave without, uh, Mr. Cow can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cow. Make sure you take care of that voter now. We're now down to the consent agenda. Item number four is the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda, second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb is not at the podium, but you, I believe he won't vote right now. And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. All right, item number five is under the regular agenda, the public hearings. We have none this afternoon, petitions and communication. A request of the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission to present its proposed 2022, 2023 operating budget and proposed capital expenditures. Mike Stewart, executive director, is a spokesperson. This is sponsored by the city manager. So there is, uh, one measure, a resolution.
Move the resolution, second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title of paragraph, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution approving the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission's 2022 through 2023 proposed operating and capital budget upon certain terms and conditions.
All right. Any questions or comments? And we have Mr. Stewart here to respond to that. I'll ask him to, uh, if he has any comments or questions or anything. All right, any comments by members of council?
Yeah, I was hoping, I was hoping Mike didn't take it personally that all the media left as soon as he introduced his items.
All right, well, good to see you. Mike, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. That's it. If you don't have anything, anything you want to share with us. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Item number 6A B is a request of the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority to present its proposed 2022, 2023 annual budget. Daniel D. Miles, chief executive officer, is a spokesperson, sponsored by our city manager. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
A resolution approving the annual budget of the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 upon, upon certain terms and conditions.
All right, any, uh, comments by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. All right, we're now down to item number seven, which is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. Uh, we have some briefings and I will call on our city manager
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am here today with others to present to you the FY 23 budget proposal. Uh, the budget, as you'll see here briefly, is balanced with revenues and expenditures of $324,789,000. I will also be, or we will also be presenting to you the five-year CIP, which is a total of $163 million. Uh, before I launch into the presentation, or the beginning of the presentation, I want to acknowledge those that have worked so diligently to get us to this point, because I get the benefit of standing up here and saying, I'm introducing and presenting this budget, but there are a lot of people, obviously, that work on getting this forward and want to first acknowledge. to first acknowledge Amelia Merchant, the Director of Finance for the city, and the work that she has done, Paul Workman, the Budget Manager, who you'll hear from here in just a few moments, and his entire team and the work that they have done as well. The rest of the budget team, which includes Deputy City Manager Clarence Greer, Assistant City Manager Brent Robertson, Assistant City Manager Apprentice Chris Chittum, and then again, as mentioned, the rest of the budget staff that works on this as well. Also, I want to thank you, Mayor and council, for your assistance in this, because this goes all the way back, if you remember, back to that strategic planning retreat, then the budget planning retreat, and then, of course, your guidance that you've provided and response during each of the monthly briefings that we have shared as we've worked our way forward toward the budget with this. Of course, in Roanoke, we budget for a reason and with intention, and that begins with our community vision, which is on the slide. Community vision, just as reminders, the city of Roanoke is a safe, caring, and economically vibrant community in which all have equitable opportunities to live, learn, grow, play, and prosper. We also continue that with a focus on our strategic priorities, and I won't read through all of these, you're familiar with them. There are seven priorities, obviously, that you all have identified through your strategic plan. Each of those have sort of an end state or an objective that we're trying to accomplish with those strategies, and those are the items, of course, as you all know, that you spend a significant amount of time at your strategic planning retreat and at the budget retreat, affirming or amending, and that is actually the beginning point of our, of the budget itself and of the process that we go through. This proposed budget continues to advance on those council's strategic priorities, support the community's ongoing recovery from COVID-19, and invests in our workforce at historic levels. This proposal continues actions that represent sound financial management, strategic investments, and enhanced funding of essential services that better the health, safety, and quality of life for the residents of Roanoke, and it does so without increasing tax rates. So I'm gonna jump in here to a few of the highlights. As mentioned, the budget presented is balanced, as is required, at $324,789,000, meaning, of course, that that equates to the revenues that we anticipate receiving in FY23, and ultimately, the expenditures that we are proposing. Again, a few items of note, this is the highest level of local funding for education that has ever been offered in the city, it's $94.5 million. It is the highest level of community safety funding that has ever been offered in the community, it's at $75.7 million. It continues to recognize the work that our employees do, and they, really, the dependency that we all have on them in performing the essential services that we all rely upon for that earlier mentioned health, safety, and quality of life, which includes a 5% pay increase proposal for all employees in the city, plus additional funding for the public safety, to continue on our efforts with the Public Safety Step Pay Plan. Of the funds that are identified, of about $6.4 million, or $6.9 million of compensation increases, somewhere around $3.7 million of that is dedicated to public safety alone. As we had committed in last year's budget, we are moving forward with the second step, or the second phase of the Step Pay Plan for the Sheriff's Department, as well as for Fire EMS, and then we are moving forward with full implementation of the Step Pay Plan for our Police Department as well. We also will continue to conclude our efforts at the $15 an hour minimum wage. Of course, last, this year, we focused predominantly on our full-time employees, and this will now include all full-time and part-time employees, essentially meaning that there will be no one working for the city of Roanoke that is not making at least $15 an hour for the work that they're doing here in the city as well. We will also continue to make investments in our CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, with a counting debt, cash, and grant funding, a total of over $64.3 million. A few highlights that will include increases in street paving, increases in, or I'm sorry, provision of dollars for reconstruction of the Eureka Recreation Center, increase in dollars available for the reconstruction of elementary schools, increase in dollars available for the replacement of the Wassena Main Street Bridge, as well as increases for stormwater improvements. There, of course, are a lot more that we'll talk about here in a few moments in the presentation, but those are some of the highlights of the CIP items. You will also note, hopefully you've already recognized this, as we've gone through the development of the budget itself, but we have increased with Chris Chittum's assistance our transparency in the CIP, so now you can go to the CIP, you can actually see in a lot more detail what is proposed under an individual category, and you can start seeing funds that are projects that are funded through cash or grant, not only our debt-funded projects. This is in an effort to ensure that our citizens understand how those dollars are actually being committed in a much clearer and broader manner, in which perhaps we've been able to do in the past. We also continue our support of regional partnerships, and are dedicating $10.7 million toward those efforts, and those efforts cover a number of different areas, including economic development, mental health, transportation, tourism, and arts and culture, to name a We are also continuing to, or I'm sorry, we're doing a number of strategic additions of key personnel, those are listed on the slide, I won't go through each of those, but they're allowing us to address areas as diverse as social services, further implementation of our capital projects, expansion of our neighborhood planning program, as well as a greater focus on neighborhood economic development activities, and those positions will enable us to do that. We, of course, continue the supportive recovery of our community, predominantly through the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds, and we also have been able to, again, be able to increase that transparency, and then finally, we have established the highest fund balance that, in effect, our rainy day fund that we've had in the city, and of course, you all know that also plays a role in the credit ratings that we receive, that ultimately play a role in how much it costs for us to borrow money that we then use for those capital investments that I mentioned. So, those are a few of the highlights. I want to just remind everyone that we developed, and then I'm gonna turn this over to Paul, that we developed this budget, as we have in all previous years, aligned with a set of guiding principles. Most of these remain consistent year to year, and of course, we adapt those based off of either circumstances or direction from you all. I won't go through all of these, but I will mention a few of them, which is obviously already mentioned, the alignment with the strategic plan. We focus to fund the highest priority services and programs. We obviously seek to fund our non-discretionary costs or contractual obligations that we have. We maintain, to the extent practical, market competitiveness with our competition, or compensation, which, of course, you have seen with this request as well. We try to avoid funding ongoing operations using one-time funding sources, and of course, most notably, as of recent, we're of course still continuing to ensure that we can restore all COVID-impacted services, and we continue to have an emphasis on equity and empowerment that, again, hopefully you'll see as we go through this presentation. I will come back at the end to kind of talk about next steps in this process as well, and certainly as we go along. Should you have any questions, please feel free to ask either Paul or myself, or the rest of the team that's here as well, and I think at this point, Paul is gonna take us forward from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Whiteboyd, members of city council, good afternoon. The recommended budget for fiscal year '23 is balanced, and in my mind, this is the point where everybody stands up and starts clapping, and confetti comes down from the ceiling, so this is a big moment for us, when we hand over the recommended budget to you all for consideration, as well as to the public, so that they can take a look at what we've proposed as well. I want to take this moment to draw attention to our recommended budget document, which is on our website, and anybody can go to the management and budget website to download this document, but there's much more information in this than what I will be presenting today, and it is our official presentation of what is included in the budget, so I would recommend anybody can certainly go and take a look at that right now if they would like to. As Bob mentioned, the proposed budget includes revenue projections of $324,789,000. That's an increase of $17.15 million, or 5.6%. The increase in revenue is primarily attributed to growth in local taxes, such as real estate, personal property tax, sales tax, prepared food and beverage tax, transient occupancy tax. Local taxes comprise of 70% of the general fund's revenue and is nearly all of the revenue growth for fiscal year '23. Financial best practices were used in arriving at these conservative revenue projections. Consistently applied conservative estimates ensure that we do not inadvertently overextend our expenditures. Revenue estimates are often based on prior performance and assumption of repeating past trends. Again, conservative estimates are essential and prudent. While the current increase may seem large, it is important to also recognize that we have undershot our fiscal year '22 revenue estimates by about $9 million. If we had properly applied this increase to our fiscal year '22 adopted budget, we would be seeing a much more typical-sized increase. And still, if we go back one more year to fiscal year '21, we actually had a shrinkage in our adopted budget due to COVID-19 fears. That was a year when employees saw no increase in compensation as a result. In other words, the fiscal year '23 increase can be thought of as a correction of prior estimates, and yes, also a result of an economy that is picking up along with inflation. That inflation, the rise, and the rise in revenue estimates has been the driving factor of this budget. Slide eight shows the expenditures we've managed to squeeze into the revenues that are being projected. The largest area of investment is the formula-driven funding provided to the Roanoke City Public Schools under the education priority. Following education, our biggest areas of investment are under the community safety priority, then followed by human services and infrastructure. With areas, the areas with the largest increases, besides the link between local tax increases that are proportionally shared with the schools, includes non-departmental, which is where our compensation increase is accounted for. Next, we have an increase in infrastructure that is mainly associated with inflation-driven costs. In the coming slides, I'll briefly explain some of the highlights in each of these priority Slide nine starts us off with the education priority. In each priority, I'll be highlighting three areas. First, I'll give examples of services and programs found in each priority. Second, I'll highlight the supplemental requests that were approved for funding, and then third, I'll highlight any personnel impacts. I won't mention each item in great detail, because that information can be found in our recommended budget document. The education priority consists of support for our schools and libraries. The supplemental of about $6.8 million is all headed to the schools. That is not to say there isn't funding for libraries, because they have submitted budget requests, or offers, as we call them, in other priorities, and there are supplemental requests that were approved for libraries as well. While we're on the subject of libraries, in the education priority, I do want to mention the one and only change in our fee structure that is included in this recommended budget, and that is the elimination of library fines. This slide shows the current rate of these fines, all of which, if approved, will be eliminated. It is important also to mention that charges for lost or damaged items will still remain in place. So, if someone loses a book, they will still be responsible for covering its costs. However, they will no longer be accumulating daily fines on lost or damaged items. In the community safety priority, we see programs and services mostly tied to courts, E-911, fire, police, sheriff, street lighting, traffic signals, and pavement markings. On slide 12, our supplemental listing incorporate items that are recommended for one-time funding, as well as ongoing annual increases as well. One-time items include things such as the courtroom refurbishment, Roanoke Training Center burn building and repairs, new control panels for operations at the jail. The annual budget will include new supplemental funding within the safety priority totaling about $800,000. This includes contractual increases in medical services provided at the jail, increased local grant match funding for drug prosecutor and victim witness programs. There is one new position that is recommended, a deputy emergency management coordinator. Currently, our emergency management division has one employee, and as the world we live in becomes more hostile and fragile, we recognize the need to provide additional resources to the emergency management division. Under the human services priority, we have services and programs that include Children's Services Act, the homeless assistance team, human services support, Department of Social Services, and programs under VJ triple CA, such as Youth Haven. Supplemental requests for the human services priority includes additional funding for cremation services, an additional position, administrative support position for the Department of Social Services attorney. The infrastructure priority on slide 14 illustrates the different programs and services found under this priority. They include items such as alley maintenance, bridge maintenance, solid waste containers and distribution, facilities management, fleet, paving program, sidewalk repairs and maintenance, snow removal, and technology, both capital and operating. Supplemental requests in the infrastructure priority include cybersecurity, gas and diesel price inflations, increased funding for street paving programs, outdoor power equipment replacements, which is a one-time request, bridge inspection and maintenance, and equipment and facility improvements. Full-time positions impacted under the infrastructure priority includes the reinstatement of an architect two position. The livability priority on slide 16 includes services and programs such as libraries, parks, and rec, planning, building, development, traffic engineering, and general services, just to name a few. Supplemental funding under the livability priority includes items such as an increase in contractual therapeutic recreation services, Roanoke Valley Resource Authority charges, and professional development, equipment, and materials through a variety of departments. The personnel impacts include the addition of two city planner two positions, one of which is a one-time funded position. It includes converting a temporary, or a combination inspector from a temporary to a full-time position, and then the addition of a security officer, which was in existence prior to COVID-19, so it is, we are essentially bringing that position back. Under the good government priority, this includes areas where we would be assessing, collecting, and providing financial reporting under the Departments of Finance, as well as many others. All that we consider are those that turn the cogs of government, such as the city manager's office, commissioner of revenue, city auditor, electoral board, et cetera. Supplemental funding under the good government priority includes moving the land book administration to the Department of Real Estate, increased funding for insurance premiums, including cybersecurity, various contractual increases, and several technology upgrades and maintenance costs related to technology, a health and wellness reimbursement that comes from our insurance provider, and professional development and equipment and supplies. Personnel impacts include the addition of a tax compliance auditor and administrative assistant three related to the land book administration. It includes the addition of an assistant to the city manager position, which is currently being funded through a grant, and we have one unfunded position, which is the cost collection specialist, which has been... has been, the administration of those duties have been taken over by the state, and we had a recent retirement as well. Part-time impacts include funding for paid summer internship programs. Slide 20 brings us to the economy priority, which is mainly the Department of Economic Development. It also includes funding for percent for arts, the administration of that, that is. The economy priority has one supplement that is related to personnel, which is the reinstatement of a senior economic development specialist position. Slide 21 brings us to the non-departmental offers. This consists of funding support for the Burgland Center, which is the form, which is in the form of debt service payments, an annual operating subsidy, and remission of admissions tax collections. The funding for the Burgland Center is level-funded. Since we met a couple of weeks ago, the non-departmental support has probably changed the most as we were able to increase our revenues through the alignment of certain revenue and expenditures that are dependent upon each other. These extra funds allowed us to level fund our contingency accounts and grow our workers' compensation reserve and risk management reserve. Non-departmental includes residual fringe benefits, which consists of reserve for medical and dental contributions, which we're actually able to decrease this year due to increased contribution rates by the city on behalf of each employee. Residual fringe benefits also includes our workers' compensation wages and medical payouts, unemployment, and termination leave wages. The largest item in non-departmental is the funding for compensation. Bob has already covered the recommended compensation package, which will include a 5% pay raise for all departments and funding for additional movement into the public safety step plan. We are also reserving an additional half million dollars for potential action that may be recommended coming out of the compensation study, which will be completed later this Slide 22 brings us to the external agencies. Funding for external agencies is where the heart of the regional activities and collaboration with local nonprofits can really be put on display. The city provides funding to several external agency partners, either through legacy agreements, memberships, sponsorships, or other miscellaneous causes. And there is a very extensive list. What you see on the screen is half of it, so let me click to the next half. Examples of legacy agreements include funding for Total Action for Progress and Center in the Square. Memberships examples include organizations such as the Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center for Small Business Owner Consulting, and the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission for Funding for a Regional Bicycle Coordinator and Regional Blu-ray Project. Examples of sponsorships include funding for the Advancement Foundation for the Gauntlet Business Program. Of course, other very important areas also include funding for the Roanoke Arts Commission and Human Services Committee, which both award grant funding to multiple local artists and human services organizations throughout the city. It also includes funding for the Arts Endowment, which has been level-funded. Some funding levels are tied contractually to census counts among participating localities. Others are tied to revenue sources such as Visit Virginia Blue Ridge or Williamson and Downtown districts, and in many cases, the funding is tied directly to programs. All organizations that received funding last year also received funding this year. We have one new organization to receive funding, and that is the Roanoke Higher Education Center, which will receive funding to assist those taking GED and other exams, and will allow them the ability to afford those exams. Slide 23, let's see, slide 24, rather, shows the organizations that received either increases or decreases in funding. In most instances, the changes are very small, particularly when it's tied to population changes or operating levels of agency partners who are also experiencing growth in budgets of their own. The biggest increase is with the Visit Virginia Blue Ridge, which has its revenue tied to the transient occupancy tax, which has seen a major uptick as the hotel industry has seen a rebound. Decreases include funding for the Health Department, which is based on funding level recommendations from a J-Larke study that indicates funding from state sources will increase over three years, which allows the city to be able to decrease its contribution. On slide 25 takes us to our last subject of the briefing, and that is the Capital Improvement Program and Funding of One-Time Items. One of the most confused aspects eyewitness of government budgeting is the linkage between the annual operating budget and the capital budgets. These are two very different worlds are linked through debt payments and one-time or pay-as-you-go cash funding. The driver of determining affordability is through ensuring we are keeping within our debt policy parameters. Expenditures that are one-time in nature are funded from sources that are also one-time in nature. In our cases, this comes from built-in excess capacity to pay for future rising debt requirements. Until that time comes, we will, for now, continue to experience excess debt funding that will go towards one-time cash-funded uses. This practice is a good financial policy because if the funding sources dries up, then theoretically, we could also shut off the one-time expenditures as well. On slide 26, in the interest of full disclosure of annual investments put towards capital-related activities, we've begun showing annually cash-funded maintenance activities such as bridge maintenance, street paving, fleet capital replacement, technology capital improvement, and capital building maintenance. We've also identified one very significant grant-funded project, which is the Eureka On slides 27, the next two slides illustrate the CIP, or Capital Improvements, planned bond issuances. The largest on the list for fiscal year 23 is the funding for schools at $12.75 million and the Wasina Bridge at $13.75 million. Other areas of investment include the Belmont Branch Library, Washington Park Pool, acquisitions of the Richardson Wyland property, Rivers Edge Phase Two, and multiple improvements at the Burgland Center. Stormwater will receive $4 million in fiscal year 23, which is an increase of its planned $3 million due to the scaling back of fiscal year 22 issuance as a result of supply chain Slide 28 shows continued funding for curb, gutter, and sidewalk projects, streetscape improvements, fleet capital replacements, multiple technology system upgrades, beginning work on fire station number two, and other capital building, maintenance, and renovation And I understand that this is probably a bit small for some to see, but anybody can go to the Management and Budget's website to find this detail in a more readable fashion. Lastly, on slide 29, we have our planned uses for one-time funded items. The excess debt funding for fiscal year 23 is $3.5 million. About $1 million of this will go towards capital project contingency to cover unforeseen or unplanned capital investments or cost escalations. And that concludes the presentation for today. I'll end, lastly, on our budget calendar, which shows the next steps of this process. On May 2nd, I'm sorry, on April 26, we have our public hearing at 7:00, which will address the real estate tax rate as well as the general fund budget that I've presented today. On May 2nd, at 9:00 AM, we have budget study, followed by May 9, the adopted budget, as well as acceptance of the Capital Improvement Program. I will mention that this time, we do not have a HUD consolidated budget due to delays at the federal level, but those will follow a different timeline once a calendar has been established. So at this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
And I'll, of course, remind council that you all know, because we're starting tomorrow, where we'll be meeting with you all individually, or two at a time, to go into more detail, ask any other specific questions that you might have, but certainly, as Paul indicated, happy to answer any questions that you have based off of what you've been presented thus far, and do what we can to answer those. Thank you.
Mr. Bestbitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, thank you for a great presentation and for all the work that I know has gone into making sure that our income and our outgo are balanced. Appreciate that a lot. I just wanted to kind of expand a little bit on a comment that you made a couple minutes ago, and assure everybody that all of this information, plus more than what you presented in this PowerPoint, is available on the city's website. If you go to roanukva.gov, click on Government, click on Finance, click on Management and Budget, and then click on Budget Development, and all the dollars and cents are there. So anybody who wants to know in any more detail exactly what the budget is made up of can get that information completely transparent, completely available to everyone, especially anyone who may be thinking about attending the public hearing on the budget and wants to know that they've got their facts and figures straight before they come. Thank you.
And we will be posting out on the media releases that we do after this meeting, we'll have one link, so you can go right to where the information is.
Excellent. Yes. Mr. Bestbitch did an excellent job. That one link would have been so many others.
We don't want you to have to link through, click through four different links. You can, but this will be a direct link, so.
And I like for people to know how to get there anytime they want.
Sure. Yeah. Step by step, step by step.
And we should have somebody carrying a copy over to the main library as well, so somebody can go to the main library and look at it also.
Will it be anywhere else other than the main library? Will it be available at the community branches?
There is a copy that will be maintained in the city clerk's office, Management and Budget's office, as well as the city manager's office, so we have.
But what about in the, like, Melrose area, or those branches where people maybe don't have transportation?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly make copies available.
I'm just trying to make sure we assess, making it accessible.
Yeah.
Yes, to make sure they are accessible. I would agree, Trish, yes.
Absolutely. We can certainly.
But I did have some questions once the mayor recognizes this.
Let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know I can go more in-depth on some of these when we, when we meet later, but there were a few things I wanted to ask about. On community safety, I noticed that there was an increase in the jail's medical services contract, and I'm glad to see some additions to the budget that address some of the challenges there. Do we know if that is just an increase in the cost of delivering services, or is there also an increase in expansion of the services being made available through the jail?
From my understanding, it is a contract increase only. There is no increase in services tied to that. The contract that is currently written, I believe, includes a price escalation, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I'd love to have more information on what's included in that contract.
Okay.
Because I know that in addition to just medical services and mental health support, there's, there are efforts to increase programming, and that is probably outside of medical services. Under human services, the line item you mentioned about cremation services, is this related to persons in our community who might be identified as transient or indigent, the poor, who may not have family, or any relatives here? Is this part of the way that we care for them at end of life when they go through this?
Yeah, and so there's, we have two different departments that handle cremations, one being the sheriff's office, and then human services. This one is related to the human services department, obviously, and what we do is we provide what used to be $500 for individuals, families who could not afford to have their loved ones buried, and so in this instance, we've increased that from $500 to $1,000, which is the typical price that we've been paying under the sheriff's department side, which includes unclaimed bodies.
Yeah, I think that's the significance between the two. The one program that the sheriff runs are for folks that really have no family.
Right.
And this one is actually, family may be present, they just can't afford the services, and this is what provides that.
And are those cremains then left up to the family to determine where they are interred or inured? Or is that, are some of those still inured out at Coiner Springs, or?
The ones under the sheriff's program would be. The ones under the other program are left with the family.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, before you go on, can I follow up on that?
Sure.
One more question, if you don't mind. My only question is, who are the funeral homes that we contract with for the cremation services?
I do not know the answer to that.
Well, we'll have to get, because there's, it's, there's more than one, but not always, so they'll work with us large till they get a certain number, and then they'll shift to others, and we'll make certain that we have that when we meet with you individually as to who's in that, I don't want to say rotation, because that's, it's not a rotation.
Okay, because I just wanted the public to know, you know, just why. I believe it's Oakies is one.
Yeah, Oakies is the primary.
And Serenity is another. I didn't know what Houndlow was now included, but I do know Lacy. I just wanted to know.
And, yeah, Thoreau's, Thorpe is another.
Thank you.
Who's been very, very good from the sheriff's department to work with.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Under infrastructure, I know we inevitably get questions about alley maintenance, and I know that the city does not do a lot of alley maintenance. What is the focus of this budget item for alley maintenance? What does that address?
Well, there is no supplemental request for alley maintenance. The item that you saw listed on slide 14 is actually for continuing efforts of what is already in the budget. We have currently in this year's budget about $415,000 that goes towards maintenance of alleys, and so there is no additional efforts built into this budget that I'm aware of.
And the current practice is that alleys that are used to provide services, which really means sanitation, or are the only means of access for individuals, are those that are available to benefit from the alley maintenance program. It's still scheduled. It's not, it's not a on-call kind of maintenance. It's scheduled by our maintenance folks. Alleys that fall outside of that by practice are not addressed through maintenance, and that's where we tend to get, you all, and we tend to get the majority of questions because they're not alleys that we maintain, because we don't use those alleys.
Okay.
And they're.
I think that helps clarify and points to, somewhat, to how we prioritize addressing them.
Yeah, I would say, though, that I still think that that, I hesitate to call it a policy, I'm just going to call it a practice, still leaves some gaps that I think we need to discuss further. I don't know what the solution is to that, because taking on all of the alleys are beyond our financial means, which is why that practice went into place, but it does leave us sometimes with homeowners who use alleys, not as their primary access point, who have no ability to maintain those, or other property owners, and I think it does still leave a gap that is worth talking about at some point in the future.
Just once again, you've got to follow up.
Sure.
Thank you. My question, Bob, is with the overgrowth that happens in the ones we don't maintain, what does the city do if they get a call with regards to that?
It's a code, it becomes a code enforcement issue, so those individual lot owners, and that's where it becomes a problem, because you may have three or four lot owners that actually do a really good job of keeping it clear, and then one that doesn't, and then that interferes with access for the others. We then go through a code enforcement process, which ultimately gets resolved, but it can take time. take time. So that's why I say there's still really kind of a gap in that practice. There was a time when that first started, this was a long time ago, when that policy or that practice started, there was a time where the city was pretty active in trying to actually, in effect, abandon the alleys and revert that ownership to those individual lot owners. That really slowed for a lot of reasons, to a point at which now we only do it upon request of those, the folks that are alongside that alley. So I still think it's a gap that needs further discussion.
So it depends on if someone calls to say that there's overgrowth in the alley.
Correct.
Or homeowner who's maintaining calls to say that it's happening.
Yeah, or if it's through an inspection or something along those lines, but yes, it's dealt with through code enforcement.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Pat, did you have a follow-up to that?
No, no, no. I think I have a question on the human services side.
He's coming down the line.
Yeah.
He's coming down the line. Okay, good.
And I'm sorry, I have so many questions.
Let me make sure, I already got somebody lined up. Is it Joe? And have you finished?
No, I have not. Okay. All right. Continuing under infrastructure, the cybersecurity. Can you talk a little bit about what enhancements that's going to support?
Yeah.
She's like, how much do you want to talk about right now?
Yeah, and we actually have cyber security enhancements built into a couple different places throughout the document. Some of it is related to additional insurance that we've purchased related to cybersecurity. And then we've also had, on the technology side, which I believe in the infrastructure priority is what you see here, has to do with some infiltration testing and other software that will try to get into our systems to, excuse me, I'm a budget guy, not a technology guy, but that will test our systems essentially.
Yeah, and it also involves changing over a number of our current software packages that are legacy systems and more susceptible to any kind of cybercrime into newer types of infrastructure that have more defenses, if you will, associated with those. You know, at some point, we'll probably stop adding this item as a standout item, because it's just something we're going to have to continue to spend more and more money on as an organization to continue to defend against, really, all the attacks that literally we receive every single day on our equipment.
Great. Under livability, I noticed that, you know, lots of good things addressed there. And I raised these nicks, too, partly because of the intersection of the work we've been doing collaboratively through the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, but I'm aware with some increased programming through the Star City Safe Initiative and a whole of government work in that effort. I'm curious about additional, whether, I didn't see it here, I'm curious if this is being planned for, additional programming staff for both the library and Parks and Recreation, because I'm aware that, you know, as they're working to increase activities, not only after school, but extended hours, weekends, that that adds an extra requirement for staffing, and I'm not sure that either are fully equipped for that expansion, and then thinking about the new Eureka Park Center that's coming down the road, I'm sure that's going to require additional staffing. I don't know the full picture, but I raised that, and just in terms of, is that being considered or looked at and evaluated as part of this overall process, not only this year, but in subsequent years?
Yeah, we're doing the Star City Safe Initiative, so that's the sort of our whole of government response to assist the efforts of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, as well as the police department, and that's where we're doing things like extra hours at the library, or extra hours at the recreation center. All of those are being handled out of one-time funding sources, and predominantly through overtime, not through additional personnel. If and when those become more permanent programs, if you will, then we'll have to start looking at that. Right now, the intent is still to fund those out of those one-time sources. As far as the Eureka Center, yes, that is an analysis that actually is underway currently, which is, once we know what the programming activities actually are going to be in the reconstructed center, then we get a kind of a staffing complement that would be necessary to implement that, and we sort of compare, where are we today with what that would need to be, and it's quite possible that in your FY '24 budget, you would see requests for additional personnel in order to be able to fully operate that center. Of course, the center won't be constructed until probably at the end of FY '24 with it and stuff, but yes, I would expect that would be a part of it.
Okay. Two more, and then I'll be done. Sorry. Under non-departmental, I'm really glad to see kind of these across-the-board compensation increases, not only in community safety, but for city employees. And I also then think, in that context, about our retirees, who've been longtime employees, now retired, and I'm curious to know two things. I know the COLA is based on a formula that was adopted some years ago. I'm curious to know if that formula has been evaluated or reviewed recently, and would like to ask that we do that, based on, you know, especially based on inflation and other costs of living increases that many of our community, including retirees, may be facing. But then, secondly, I know because of the compensation increases this year, retirees will likely see an increase in their income based on that formula, but I'm not sure how sustainable that is over the longer term. So I guess my one question is, will they see an increase because of the compensation increase for employees based on that COLA formula? And I'd like to request that we evaluate and review that formula to make sure it's sustainable, especially through times of inflation like we're currently in, not knowing how long that's going to last, and the impact that has on their cost of living.
Yes, it will go, they will be receiving a benefit associated with the increase, as has been laid out. We're proposing a 5% increase, so the formula will deliver, obviously, an increase to the retirees. I don't remember, it's two points something, a little less than 3% increase when you run it through the formula. The pension board, who actually manages our pension fund, does evaluate that formula, along with many other things. Matter of fact, they just now are in the process of looking at a completed sort of five-year analysis of sort of performance associated with the pension itself. You may recall that at the end of FY '21, we pointed out that our liabilities in the pension fund were at 91% coverage, meaning 91% of the actuarial liabilities are covered by the funds that exist. That five-year study allows us to make that adjustment, and they're going through that process right now. What that has, or will have the impact of doing is, in the FY '24 budget, you'll see us actually having to come to you all with proposals for additional dollars to go in simply to sustain the pension fund itself. So I would say, actually, the sustainability question that we answer first is the sustainability from a general fund standpoint of what we can contribute into it, and then only after that would we actually entertain any changes in the, in any kind of cost of living adjustments for the retirees. You know, that formula has been in place for quite some time, as I understand it, and it gets evaluated as a part of that process. Now, in fairness, it has been evaluated in the past of whether we can sustain it at its current level, much less any kind of increase, because obviously, you know, that formula is the formula that those individuals, when they sought employment with the city, is what we all have actually accepted as, that's the formula we operate under when we retire, but it is a part of that analysis.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last is under external agencies. I know, Paul, you mentioned the level funding for the Rona Cultural Endowment, but I didn't see that listed in the external agencies, so I wanted to make sure that it's there.
Yeah, it's definitely there. $125,000.
Well, good, and...
And if you remember, we moved it as part of our base budget, so that we no longer have to see if we have money.
Yeah, and when we have opportunities, even if it's a one-time, to add additional contribution to that, I think it benefits all of our arts organizations, so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have a word with the cultural endowment? You know, every year, that used to be a big push with the... What was that? Uh, Bestbitch?
Yes, I'll be real brief, because I think I actually meet tomorrow. I think I'm the only one that's meeting tomorrow.
You might be, yeah.
I think I am, but I would like to, if you could just summarize all of the other questions by my colleagues, so we can kind of get an idea, you know, what some of their concerns are, since we are only going two by two, so I won't ask all my questions now. I just have a couple that I wanted to ask about. Under the infrastructure, the supplemental funding, the 1.5 million, does that by chance include the 1.3, I don't see how it could, that we might possibly get from the property taxes for the street paving? Would we see it there, or would we see it someplace else?
That is more of a fiscal year '22 issue, as opposed to '23.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so the work, so those dollars are, in effect, dollars that exceed budget for the current year we're in. Those have been dedicated, as we talked about before, part of that, 40%, that money will go to schools for funding.
Okay, okay.
The rest will go to paving.
Yeah, we're at '23 now. Okay. Let me ask you this. You said we're going to reinstate the senior economic specialist? So when was the last time we actually had one, or is this another one, or do we have two, or is this just the first time? I mean, you know, we're going to reinstate it for the first time since when?
Yeah. My understanding is that this is actually a new title. We did have a position that was unfunded in economic development, which was a, I want to say, program specialist. And so what we did was, we funded that position and reclassified it to a senior economic development specialist. So...
So technically, you're not reinstating, you actually recreated?
We are funding it and reclassifying the title for it.
Oh, okay. I think that's a good idea, because at some point, I'd...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I didn't want to get into all those details in the presentation, but since you asked.
No, 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 no. That's fine, that's fine, yeah. I just, you know, at some point, I've already spoken with Mr. Cowell about it, I'd like to revisit our economic development. I think that, you know, certainly we can just put a little bit more in the budget, so we could refocus on that. I think we've ignored it for a little too long. Just another question about Carvin's Cove. Who manages that, and what department does it fall under?
It's actually the Water Authority.
Water Authority?
Yeah, the land is managed by our Parks Department, so the trails themselves, but the water surface and the activities on the lake itself, entry fees, those kinds of things, that's all the Water Authority.
So we don't see any of those fees?
No.
Okay.
But we do manage and maintain the trails through our Parks Department.
Yeah, well, I was going to talk about the fees and the one where you step out of your car to take a picture, they charge you. I was going to mention that.
Just going to mention.
Yeah, just, you know, just to say, how much are we really making? You know, because it actually happened to me with my grandbabies. I had to pay $5, because I got out of my car. I didn't realize you had to do that. But anyway. So my next question is about the wetlands in Washington Park. I know that we're hoping to address Washington Park, the pool, but are the wetlands, are they part of a flood mitigation, or is it a natural stream? Because we've gotten so many complaints about the look of it, and so if it's a natural stream and there's nothing we can do about it, that's one thing, but if it's part of a flood mitigation, that's another thing.
It's all of the above.
All of the above.
So it is a natural stream that had been, what everybody seemed to have liked before was not natural, so it was straight, it was a drainage ditch, is what it was.
Right, yeah.
But it's supposed to be a creek with wetlands, so as a part of a floodplain mitigation effort, or flood mitigation effort, as well as part of a wetlands restoration effort, that work that was done out there is what was done associated with that piece of it. Over time, all things being equal, you'll see the plants actually change over time, because again, it's not, it's only two years old, I think, is how long the work has been. So it will continue to evolve as it goes forward, but it is intended to be wetlands, and so it is in its natural condition. That is actually what that area originally would have looked like with the wetlands material that's there, and it'll continue to evolve as it goes forward, so.
Well, I just want to know what to tell folks, because they hate the look of it in that.
What you can tell folks is that, I mean, we had a very extensive community involvement program associated with that, that folks were aware of what was going on with it. People have objected to the change, I think, more than what the end result is, but it is in its natural condition. I mean, that is what it is supposed to be as it goes forward, and I think folks are reacting to that it looks different than what was there before. An example is, I know right now we're working with the Kiwanis in restoring the wetlands that are over by the school next to Melrose Library. It will look very different than what it has looked like there in the past as well, because wetlands look very different than manicured parks. I mean, that's just...
Can I interject on that one, too?
Yeah, 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 because I'm doing, I'll save mine until tomorrow.
No, it is with Washington Park, and part of the, my question is, and I talked with you, Bob, about that, it wasn't actually the plantings, it was the overgrowth that's mixing in with the pollinators that are not there, and I asked you the question, will they put any pollinating bushes in their butterfly bushes or bird habitat to come in? And plus, they took out the trees. So my question is, with the climate change and the heat in Allen, will there be trees put back in there as well? I don't think so.
No, there won't be trees put back in, because the trees were not, the trees, again, were not native to that area.
Right, but I guess they were just looking at in the property itself, will there be any replacements of some of the trees that have died out?
Oh, in the park?
Will they, yes, in the park, where they actually took out a few, when they retrenched the creek. And so, it's not that, from where I understand, it's not what has been done there, it's just the appearance of the overgrowth spreading on out, it's like it's not being contained with the native plants that were put in. Maybe that's it, the overgrowth, yeah. The overgrowth.
But what you're referring to is overgrowth, it's the natural material that's there.
Right, because when you walk by, you see the weeds and the things, I've walked through there, and I notice when they mow, they keep mowing further on out, and I just see more coming out.
It gives wider water, yes.
The other thing that you can tell people is, the same thing happened over Countryside, and the same thing has happened many places along the Rona River Greenway, on purpose to provide more wetland and to provide more flood mitigation. I mean, that's what it's there for. I had somebody contact me not too long after certain sections of the Greenway were completed, complaining that artists want to go down to certain spots along the Greenway and paint, and all this growth was getting in their way, they couldn't get a good view. So I explained why that's important for erosion control, but also suggested two or three places where they could go that still seem to present a nice view of the river if they want to paint. But that's, you know, it's very environmentally sound and progressive to be doing that, and I understand some people have a hard time dealing with the change, but it is important.
Right, and I could understand that. The only thing I ask, if that's the case, is to put something out there identifying what it is, so when they walk through, they understand.
And that work is underway, where there's going to be more sort of interpretive signage and stuff that explains what it is. We've even talked about potentially partnering with others to do, you know, a couple times a year, like tours of that area for folks that are interested, so they can understand what is out there, and what they perceive to be weeds may not be weeds.
And then they'll have understanding, if they are able to read what it is. Thank you, thank you.
Because we get a lot of back and forth from citizens on that, because it's, you know, it's right on 460, when you come into town, and those, so people don't know.
I kind of deviated a little bit from the budget, but it was just, it kind of got, uh...
Why, thank you.
It kind of got carried away. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going out. I'll save mine until tomorrow.
Let's move around.
Okay, I'm going to be a little different, and I have to ask, because I'm new, and I like details, so you're going to have to bear with me, Paul, and I'm going to go through mine where I checked off my pages to ask my questions, so you all just sit back and just let me get through this. On page four, my question is, on page four, if you want to put it up, that's fine, if not, you can just answer from the podium. I'm curious with regards to the continued investment in facilities and equipment, where you have the 64 million. My question is, I know you mentioned that you're posting that information on social media, but again, and I think several people have mentioned this, some from council and then from citizens, who do not have internet, or do not know how to use a computer. I'm talking about those maybe 70 and up, who still like to stay engaged. So my question is, how will they know about these investments, and where would they get this information from, other than social media, on the website?
Well, as I mentioned previously, we will also have copies of the recommended budget at the main library.
So they can get it from the proposed document?
Yeah, or they can certainly come in here to the municipal building and find it at the clerk's office, or city manager's office.
Okay. And let me go to page, on page five, under the strategic addition of key personnel, you have the planer two, which will assist in development of neighborhood plans. Is this part of the one, there was a one-time funding from last year?
That is correct.
That you're making permanent this time?
Yes, we've had two, planer two positions... Yes, we've had two, planer two positions that have been one-time for a number of years, and so this actually is enabling us to make one of those positions permanent, and we're still keeping one of them listed as a one-time funding source, yeah.
And so the senior economic development specialist, where you have the additional support of that, is that part of the strategic economic development plan, is that where that's coming from?
Yeah, that, yes, I mean, it is, as Paul mentioned, it's really kind of the reinstatement of a position that we had kind of let, in effect, go vacant during COVID, during transition from Mark taking over as the director, and as, as you've mentioned, we've got a strategic economic development plan effort underway. This will help guide the work of that person, but really the work of all of the people inside that department, but this will be pretty integral in that as well.
Okay, okay. And, I want to miss it, I think. On page nine, you mentioned that under supplementary, supplemental funding, that 6.7 for the schools, and you base that on the formula, is that, that's not part of the recommended total of the 94, is it? For the schools, for the, for the Roanoke City Public Schools, from their supplemental piece?
The 6.77 million is included in the 94.5 million dollar number.
So the remaining part, the 87.7 million is for the main, I mean, the main library operations?
No, no, that's, that's the base, and so essentially, the, the libraries under the education priority includes library core community services of about 1.6 million, library early literacy services of 145,000, and then library services to K through 12 of 159,000. So, and then it also includes summer reading initiative for 22,000, and then youth services initiative of about 19,000. So there's other items included in there.
So youth services initiative, could you elaborate a little bit on that?
And I believe that is under the.
Yeah, that, that's the work that we do, it's like the summit, you know, we have the, the youth summit each year.
And how much you said is for that?
18,750.
Okay, about 18,000.
And the, the 87.7 million dollar number you referred to, if you think of that, is that's kind of current funding, so that's what we currently fund all of this stuff. The 6.7 million dollar addition is what gets us to 94 million.
Right, but I mean, the 18,000 is going to be for the youth, youth services initiative?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And all of that detail is included in the.
It's going to be in that proposed, when, I'll just get a copy, I'll look at it online for that.
So, and I'll just show, in the document, essentially, there's a listing of all of the, the budget offers, and it lists them out along with their amounts.
Okay, so gives details on that. Okay. Answer that one, answer that one. Under the infrastructure piece, on page 14, you have the paving program. Now, with regards to that coming out of the recommended total of the 29 or 30 million, is there a list of the, under this paving program, is that where the street paving and all of that's done?
Right, so that's where all of our, like, currently, right now, we're doing street paving across the city, that's the paving program that pays for that.
So there is a list out there that shows of the streets in order that they are scheduled to be paved?
There, there are in the current year, so what we do is, you all may recall, that we do an assessment of all of our streets, give us a condition of all of those streets, then what they do is, each year, as we start to go forward with the contract for services, we actually put that together into a proposed package of streets that will be, be done. So the listing in, I'll explain something further in a second, but the listing of those right now are the ones we have under contract. So if you think of the big list, it's got tens of millions of dollars worth of need on it, we extract from that a couple million dollars, that's what's being in the contract and underway right now. What we'll then do is we'll start formulating what's the next collection of streets, we pull out of that big list and put out for, for bid as well, and then we know definitively. The reason it's not just, you know, street number one, street number two, street number three, because if you remember, we also try to do all of the streets in a particular area at one time. So that may be, you know, priority number two, and then priority number eight, priority number 10, just because we're trying to group those together, but there is that large inventory, and then we extract from that, that year's worth of, of work. And we should, I think by the end of the summer, we'll know what streets will be into next spring's paving program, because that's when we actually enter into the contract with the contract.
And other than on the website, when you list the streets that are being paved, where else can citizens see where the streets are being, the current streets that are set up?
The current, the current streets?
Yes, just like on the website, where you all would post that these streets are being paved?
Yeah, I think that's really actually the only place that we actually make that information available. I don't even know what that list is, because it's in the contract.
Right, but I see it out there from time to time, it'll list, do now, you know, like detours, because these streets are being paved.
Right, and that's how we'll do it, is we'll, we'll post that out on our press releases as well as out on our website and social media, so that folks know, you know, a week or two ahead of time, what streets we're going to be working on, but then kind of behind that are the next couple of weeks' worth of streets, that list is not out there.
Right, so does the public know when you have those that are scheduled right after the ones that are two weeks getting ready to be done? Do they know that they are on the list per se?
Not necessarily, no, no, because we don't have that large.
They just don't know until their street starts getting milled and.
No, it'll be about two weeks prior to that that we'll actually start note, putting out the notice, because remember, as you say, we kind of, we start with milling first, then we go to paving, so about two weeks prior to that work beginning, there's a notice that those streets are actually next. Sometimes if there's parking on the street, there's actually, no parking signs start getting posted, that'll explain when that paving is going to occur and stuff with it, so.
But if anyone is really interested in knowing if they're on the list, if they notice that, they can contact.
Transportation Department, which, yeah.
Transportation, okay.
Yeah, and we will certainly try to do a better job of including that information in our CIP document this year.
I think it'll be.
Because typically, street paving has been considered an annual activity that has not been bond funded, and so it's not made its way into our CIP document, but this year it will, so that's something that we can certainly try to at least include a link to where that information is.
Yeah, I think that's good. And then I think on, on page 16, you mentioned parks and rec, with their operations, athletics, the community recreation, the urban forestry and youth development. You may have to look at it, could you tell me how much is allocated under urban forestry? I had a question with regards to urban forestry a while back, about tree plantings, how that's done, if the city still did, replacement of trees, so I'm just curious as to how much is allocated in the budget for that? Is that a breakdown that you could give me, or I need to wait?
Well, I can, I can give you some information.
That's fine, what you got?
The urban forestry offer that was submitted and is being recommended is about 669,000. That includes emergency tree removal, so, you know, there is an urban forestry component to it with planting trees, of course, but the bulk of this, of course, is when a tree falls down in the street and we need to get it moved so traffic can open back up. That's primarily what I believe their activities entail.
And there are, and there are tree planting allocations in that.
Yes.
As well as in stormwater, and also in some limited way in other parks, capital proj- so in other words, if we do a street project and it has sidewalks, we're likely also to come in and plant trees, that would actually be categorized under a street project, not under urban forestry portion of it. And then that, it was last year, it's the last year of the year, but was it last year? We did a supplemental.
I can't remember.
Where we provided a substantial additional amount of funding to do tree planting through the urban forestry program as well.
Yeah, I think it was a grant, okay, that answers that one. The other one that I have, and I'm almost done, Mayor, I'm just about there. Yeah, I'm sure, I told you, you're going to have to sit back and wait. With regards to, I noticed on several of your, under good government livability, and it may be under economy, or just livability, I noticed that you, I'm just really mad on that one, I apologize, with regards to the professional and development, is that, how much is allocated for that? Is that for the various departments?
Yeah.
For theirs? And I noticed it was one, one I saw where it's in the supplemental, or is it taken? It's a decrease, I thought I saw that somewhere. You were decreasing professional development in one of the, what's that I saw? But anyway, I just saw that, and I was just wondering, it was neither here nor there, but I was just wondering about it, where you had it, where it was in a supplemental instead of part of the actual good government, it was in good government, and where, and I just didn't understand why it would not be part of the government and not a supplemental being added in.
And it, it is part of the, it is in that, it's part of every, every department or every priority, in this case, it is a part of good government, this is actually an additional, it is additional funding for professional development.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, because I'm, I'm definitely an advocate for professional development. And I think, the last one is under good government, I was just concerned, or just curious, and this was for the manager, where you had the assistant to the city manager, you mentioned that one time it was under grant, and now you're putting it as a permanent position in your department, and I was just wondering, what is that position?
Sure, so the assistant to the city manager is a position we've had for decades, and when we, when COVID came along at that same moment in time, Angie O'Brien, who actually was in the assistant to the city manager role, was getting promoted into a new position, which was the strategic, chief strategy officer in the department. Because we didn't know what the budget was going to do at that point in time, we did not fund a replacement for that position. This year, about, what, Wayne, about a month ago, if even that, two weeks ago, we went ahead and reinstituted that position, which is currently funded through ARPA dollars, so there, so Wayne's only focus right now is actually on performance measures and record keeping associated with ARPA, but in FY '23, we'll transition that to about 50/50, so it's going to be about half ARPA funded and then half general fund portion, but it's the same position that we've had for, I don't know, 10, 15 years, it just hadn't been filled for the last two years.
So Wayne gets that position, and what was the position Chris Chittam got?
Chris is the assistant city manager apprentice, so that's that apprentice program that we have in place.
So that was a newly created position, too?
And that's a temporary, those are temporary assignments for that, and that's a part of our succession planning.
And, okay, all right. I think, Mayor, I may just be done. Oh, the other one, my last one was on external agencies, where you mentioned the funding. My question is, with regards, you mentioned total action for progress, and that they would still be receiving funds, will they still be receiving the same amount that they have in the past?
Yes.
No, no decrease?
Yep.
And the last one was on the Virginia Western Community College, you have scholarships? How much and where is that coming from?
Let me look up the amount.
Is that the CCAP program?
I didn't know if that was CCAP, I was wondering if that was CCAP. You just called it scholarships, okay.
Yeah, I think it is, I don't think there's anything different from that one.
No, yeah, and we were notified by the college that.
So that's what that one is, I was wondering if that was it?
Well, I think I was with them Saturday at the Goodwill, and they had some reps down there, they had scholarships, they were saying to students, they got the CCAP program, but there was scholarships for students that applied, that wanted to apply.
Yeah, this particular funding, though, that they requested is just continuation of the CCAP program.
And then on, under the CIP, on page 27, with regards to the Washington Park pool, I noticed you have the 750,000 for '23, and then you have the 2.4 million in 2024. So what will be done at the pools for the '23 and for '24?
That'll be the, the engineering design and the beginning of the demolition.
So that's what the 75, okay, 750 is. And then, under the schools, the second, second one on page 27, where you have the new construction, I noticed you, there is a new playground for Herc Park. Will that be placed in the green area where I had talked with you about it one time, or is this just replacing the small playground next to the school?
I don't know, I'll have to find that, that out.
Okay, because I was, I'm hoping that it's in the green space where the park, the playground equipment used to be.
Yeah, because this is actually a request from Roanoke City Public Schools.
Right.
So I'll need to find out, it's not our, yeah, it's not our parks program or anything, so we'll see, we can find out from God.
Yeah, because of the funding, I was just wondering if it, if it's up to us, if it could be put in that green space, open space, where it'd be accessible to all.
Yeah, we can, we can find that out, because I don't know the answer to that.
And I think that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Vivian Sanchez, don't.
I will make it easy, I will email all my questions to Mr. Cowell, and we could go over them on Wednesday. I will have his undivided attention.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
Let me just ask a few, and, and pretty much my meeting is scheduled for Thursday the 21st, I think at 9 o'clock, Rob, and I can just address some, some of these specifics, a lot of them have been already addressed. But let me ask you, Paul, on one question, and you may not know this, well, you should, on page 11, and this may have been mentioned, I've been framing through papers over here, school resource officers, is that funded to a position where we can have them now available in the school and all of our, I guess all of the schools, other than elementary schools?
Yeah, our, our issue here has not been funding availability, the funding is, is in place for it, and remember, the school, school actually is the one that funds us for at least most of, of those positions. Our issue has actually been securing people, personnel to be, be able to assign those, so, but yes, all the funding for the SROs are included in this budget still.
Good.
And I believe similarly, that funding is provided in the school's budget as well for their share of it.
Oh. Are there any updates on when Melrose Park is going to be worked on? That's a, you know, we used to have our basketball classic down there, there was a reason we had it down there, this wasn't the Melrose Park, I mean, it's a beautiful done court, but we wanted kids in that area, especially during the summer months, to be involved in some things, so how is that, how's that coming?
That would be in, I mean, Melrose, you know, all of our parks, much like our streets, have an assessment condition attached to all of the courts, all of the parking lots, all of the facilities, and then those, historically, those have only been funded through our capital program, which means they largely weren't funded. In the last two years, you all have authorized us some additional funding that could focus on deferred maintenance. So, for example, right now, there's about $2 million worth of work going on with various courts and getting those resurfaced, that was what was done at Washington last year, some of our trailheads were done, so I don't know where Melrose, I don't think it's in this current list, but I can find out so that we know where it falls on the, on the list and stuff.
Joe?
Mayor, I just wanted to say that.
I was at a meeting recently where one of the Parks and Recreation staff said that one of the reasons they pulled up that court at Melrose was because it was not put in properly. The subcontractor did not put it in properly, and so they are having to red, have it redone.
Sure.
So it will last.
I'm hoping we'll, we'll do it this time, but I, I just want to, during the summer months, I want to keep kids involved as much as they can, and that area is an area that's very active in the summer months, so thank you.
Yeah, the good thing is, we've been able to spend, again, with your help, we've been able to spend a lot more on court conversions, court resurfacing, trailheads, than we really have ever been able to do, so we're going to continue to do that as we go forward.
You'll have the dedication at Washington Park, you can, they can play there if you have to, because that's going to be a brand new court.
Yeah, I, I think we're planning to go back to Eureka, especially for me, because you got shade and you got a lot of trees over there.
Okay.
Because around about, I'll tell you, around about June, it gets 92, 91 degrees, and I used to could stand out there and wave cheer for them, but I can't, can't do it now, so.
And Mi- Michael Clark, all the staff, of course, is watching this right now, so Michael just texted me and said that he, they expect whether permitting those courts on Melrose will be completed later this spring or early summer.
Yeah.
The only thing I could add to that?
Oh, yes, sir.
The only thing I would ask is that when those things occur, if we could communicate that to the public, by putting up signs that we're not getting rid of something, that we're just doing repairs, and that it will be done, you know, be ready for like, like you just said, early spring, late summer, at least those who are walking by would have an idea of what is going on, and not blowing up our phones or emails.
Yeah, can you communicate that?
That's a good point, that's a good point, what you're saying. What are y'all doing with Melrose?
I mean, right now.
Like, we want to get rid of Melrose.
That's right, you don't know.
Because we all know the calls, I was just saying, but I just asked Mr. Cowell, how do you communicate that, though? It's hard to communicate that.
And that's why I said put up a notice on, you know, on your fence or somewhere over there, to let them know that we're repairing, replacing, or something, there is a fence there.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's different ways.
Somehow they get under them, I don't know how y'all, they getting by them.
No, no, they call, I had people call wanting to know why they're getting rid of I had people call wanting to know why they getting rid of the park.
And you go, what? I didn't know.
And you're not getting rid, and I said, I said, trust me, whatever it is, if it's at Melrose, it's, it's an improvement, you know? I certainly could not imagine a city parent.
Or either have it announced at the, at the council meeting publicly, so the viewing audience does hear it.
That's true. I just try to figure out how, I mean, that's one of the things that we've been working on is communication.
Yeah.
Which I know this has nothing to do with budget.
I know. We went off the rails.
Like, we are trained with it.
You know, when you deal with the budget, you're expected to know everything about everything, so.
That's right.
Given the climate we're in these days, we really wanna keep them busy as much as we can.
As much as we can.
You may have mentioned this, I'm sure you did, Paul, part-time paid summer internship program. How's that, how does that work?
Yeah, so this was the, we've had a, we've had a summer internship program for a number of years. So these are students mostly from Virginia Tech, but we have students from Radford and all across the Commonwealth that come back here for the summer and then work in various departments. Two years ago, I think, was right, right when COVID was beginning, we actually, it was the first year we actually were in a position to pay those interns for being here, and then we couldn't, because we couldn't do it because of COVID. So this is a reinstatement of those programs. This actually falls in part of our equity efforts here in the city, because students that need to or want to do internships, but they're gonna seek out internships that pay them for the summer, because they need those dollars during the summer as well. So this is a way where we can continue to get those resources of those students present, their experience, get them that experience, but also ensure that they're fairly compensated as they go forward. So that's what this will, that's what this is for.
Can I follow up with that, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cowell, with that being said, so we potentially could have some students helping us from Hollins, correct?
Yes, we've had students from Hollins before, yeah.
Um, would that, where would that money come from, since this is a new, something you've just recently?
Those are, so if approved, the budget.
If approved, right, because we're hoping it will be, because we haven't had that last discussion yet.
Right, if approved, the budget just, the budget just includes dollars in the HR budget to cover the cost of the interns.
In 2022, we still have some money there.
No, well, that would be for 2023.
Oh, okay, but I was thinking this might translate as.
Yeah, we don't, no, we don't have anything currently funded for interns in 2022, because we didn't have that program in place.
We didn't have that, so, well, maybe I'll talk to you tomorrow about alternatives. Okay.
All right. That's, that's all I have, Paul. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
And I did want to say that, to give you a correct answer on the question regarding the cost of living adjustment for retirement, so it's 3.12% as a result of the formula.
3.1?
12%, yeah. Thank you all, and I know we'll have a lot more conversations as we go, go forward. And I'll just reinforce again what Paul said at the end, too, which is, this is all in anticipation of the public hearing, which is scheduled for Tuesday, the 26th, on the budget, and then your sort of work session after that on May 2nd, and then adoption on May 9th.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Maybe could you drop something?
Thank you, Amelia. All right, we're gonna receive everything and file it.
Thank you.
And move on to the next items that are recommended for action. Item number one is the acceptance of the National League of Cities Institute for Youth, Education, and Families Grant. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title of the paragraph?
A resolution accepting the National League of Cities Institute for Youth, Education, and Families Implementation Grant, funding to the city, and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right, any discussion, Ramon Counselor?
I just have a question.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
My question deals with, you mentioned in the report that the grant will create a pilot program for up to 20 citizens whose employment was impacted by COVID, and who want to enter the careers in either the medical or biotech fields. Do you have a process for how you will select the 20 citizens?
I'm gonna look to Amelia, or Amelia, Ayesha, and ask her to come up. Ayesha's the project manager on this, on this grant for economic developments.
Yeah.
And actually, the applicant for this grant, so we have it because she applied for it.
But thank you for applying for that indeed.
Thank you. We're working with Virginia Career Works, our local workforce development board, to identify clients that they have that want to take that step from the current jobs that they're in to jobs in the medical or biotech fields.
Okay. So will you also be putting it out, like through the city's media sites, if there are people out there who may be interested, who've been affected by COVID, that may be interested in going in this field as well?
Yes.
Is that your intent?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have a question? Good to see you, Ayesha.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. That was easy.
All right, there's a budget ordinance. Well, no, 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 let me, let me go back. Any discussion?
That's it.
No discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes, and then we have a budget ordinance.
Move the revised budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
All right. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the National League of Cities Institute for Youth, Education, and Families for the 2022 NLC Implementation Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion from members of council? Herd non, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. I'm pleased to recognize a city manager now for any comments that he may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, only, only one item I want to draw attention to, and that is on Wednesday morning, in response to your request regarding the Ukrainian flag raising, we'll be having that ceremony at Freedom Plaza at 10:00 a.m. So that's this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. out here at Freedom Plaza. We've been in communication with the folks from, that came and spoke before the council meeting, so they'll be in attendance as well. It looked like, I just received an email before this meeting, about at least a dozen folks from the Ukrainian community here locally will be in attendance as well, so they will be there as a part of it. If, as I get additional details, certainly welcome me. We're actually, I think, gonna ask at the end of this meeting that we actually recess in order to.
Tonight's.
Tonight's meeting, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll actually ask to recess so that you can all be in attendance at the 10:00 a.m. if you're able to make it. That's the only announcement I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And we'll have a, we'll have some additional information going out today for anybody in the public that would like to join in as well.
Thank you, Ms. Look forward to that. Item number 8A is a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Who's the budget ordinance?
Second.
Let's, Clerk, to please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal, and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Herd non, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Item number B is a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city council serves as liaisons or appointees. Are there any comments from council?
I think I have a question for Joe, if I could ask, with regards to the gun violence. I do have a question. My question is, with regards to the applications that you all received, do you know when you'll be notifying the, I've had a couple of people reach out to me.
Yeah, we're, we're finishing up that process tomorrow, and so it will be after that. It'll be probably later this week.
This week, okay.
Yeah, or the first part of next week.
Okay.
Because we, we have some follow-up questions for some of the applications, so we're allowing to get some feedback on those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So who works with you on that? I mean, are you a lone soldier on that, or you have a?
No, it's, it's the Gun Violence Prevention Commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Item number nine is unfinished business. We have none. Item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, a resolution memorializing the late George Kegley, longtime Roanoke journalist and community volunteer. There's a resolution.
Resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution memorializing and celebrating the life of George Andrew Kegley, reporter, local historian, and indefatigable community lead, community volunteer.
Okay, any comments or questions by members of council?
If I could, Mayor, I'd like to give credit to the author of this resolution, former city attorney, Bill Hackworth, who knew Mr. Kegley intimately and wanted to participate. And I just want to thank him for taking the time to draft this resolution, because it's a heartfelt remembrance of Mr. Kegley.
Well, thank Bill for that. We appreciate him going there. Mr. Kegley was a person who was well thought of in our community, and we do want to do this. His family will be mailed the resolution. All right. Madam Clerk, you ready to call the roll, Ramon?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Item number B is a resolution naming the book archive collection in the Virginia Room in the main branch library in honor of Mr. George Kegley. There's a resolution.
Resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution renaming the book archives collection of the Virginia Room at the Roanoke City Public Library to George A. Kegley Archives Collection.
All right. Any questions or comments by council? All right. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes, and it also will be mailed to Mr. Kegley's family. Item number 11 is inquiries and or comments by the mayor and a member of the city council. Ms., Vice, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am always, if I given an opportunity, make a plea for volunteers for the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. It's a very important work that we're doing, and we're not able to do it without volunteers from the community. So if you are interested in volunteering on either one of the five subcommittees, please contact myself or the clerk's office, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I just have one. This is my last one. And this is to Bob. Do you know write-off how much money we receive from the state toward the personal property tax?
For the?
For the personal property, we receiving money for the surplus?
Yeah, for the ref, for the.
For the, yes.
Not the refund, but for the relief piece.
Yeah, I wanna give it a refund, that's why I just said it like that.
I can get that for you. We had it, I know we had the percentage presented at the last meeting, what that equates to in dollar amounts. I wanna say it's 8 million something, but I'll get you the exact amount.
Okay. Because my understanding is that the personal property taxes, did they go out today or they go out tomorrow?
Tomorrow, I believe, the bill.
Okay. And do we want to let the public know that there is a significant increase?
There is likely.
There is a significant increase.
If they, if, if folks don't know that by now, I'll be surprised, because it's gotten some pretty good attention out there.
Yeah, well, I just think they saw maybe it's still asleep and didn't know, and that they'll be looking tomorrow, that they will have that increase. And would you, again, let the public know what you plan to do with that increase, that